Ms. D, you ready?
I'm going to call to order the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners' regular session, January the 19th, 2021. We're going to ask Mr. Sean Hassel if he'll come forward and do our invocation.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight just giving you thanks for another day that you've given. Lord, we pray for our elected officials that you have appointed for this time, both here in our county, community, and also across the land. Lord, we just know that you're in control and in charge. And, Lord, you have raised up people that, for this time and this moment, Lord, we just pray that you'll just fill them with your Spirit. Lord, we ask for your wisdom, that you give them understanding and discernment to make decisions that will honor you. And, Lord, we ask you will bless this tonight's meeting, as we remember that you were present with us. And we pray that the words we say and the thoughts of our heart will be acceptable and pleasing in your sight. God, us in all truth and love, that you may be glorified. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thanks, Sean. The next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you are able to stand, please do so.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Did I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Dottie Robinson. Do I have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Commissioner Mary Hassel. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The next item is a presentation of the COVID-19 update by Ms. Perez.
Good evening, Commissioner.
Thank you.
So I'm just going to start from the beginning and kind of work up to where we are right now. Altogether, the Health Department has received a total of 900 doses of the Moderna vaccine from the state. We are currently vaccinating those who are 65 and older, according to the new guidance that was received last Tuesday, excuse me. And needless to say, that volume has increased. It made our volume for having to provide the vaccine increase greatly. Total amount of vaccine that we had on hand prior to today's vaccination clinic, because we held a large clinic at the James Garner Center today, we had 580 doses. We wanted, we set a goal to give 300 vaccines in eight hours. We ended up giving 310. We had some people that showed up that said that they had been called and had an appointment. So we just opened another vial and added that, so they were able to get the vaccine. Tomorrow will be a down day for the Health Department so that we'll be able to enter all of those doses that were given today into the state system, which is the CBMS. That is the only way that we get our vaccine replaced. We have to get it in that system so that they'll know that we're actually giving 30% or more of the vaccine. So altogether, we have given 630 doses of the vaccine since we initially started receiving vaccine from the state.
I'm sorry, what was that number?
630. On Thursday, we plan, or we already have scheduled to give 100 vaccines. And on Friday, January 22nd, we will give 100 vaccines. And then on Monday, the 25th, we will give 70. At that time, we'll be completely out of vaccine. My understanding is that going forward, well, currently, the state is providing second doses to all that have received their first doses, the latter part of December. I looked on the spreadsheet this morning, and there were no allocations for our Health Department at that time. Today, I don't know if you all heard on the news that Health Secretary Azar, he urged all states to open up the eligibility for the vaccine to everyone 65 and older and for adults of any age with medical conditions that would put them at risk of becoming seriously ill or dying from COVID-19. So this is, and I'm sure that North Carolina understands that this is really going to put a strain on not only the Health Department, but the other providers throughout the state that are providing the vaccine. I don't know how we're going to be able to do it, but we'll do the best we can with what we've got. That's all we can do. I received an email over the weekend from a Dr. Morrow at the state level. And in our standing order, Dr. Vang wanted us to put that if anyone was on a blood thinner, that they needed a note from their primary provider in order to receive the vaccine. So Dr. Morrow said that that was not necessary. It was a recommendation of CDC. So going forward, we will not be requiring that note, because we don't want it to be a barrier for anyone receiving, to receive the vaccine. And I think that's all I have. Any questions?
I would like to add that today, I was out at the James Garner Center, and the feedback on the smoothness of how people were processed through, that was great. And just watching it, seeing it in action, so the team did a really great job today.
Well, thank you.
And you did a lot of vaccinations today, so that's awesome.
Yes, I did. That's what public health does.
Yep, it was great.
We'll get it done.
Thank you for that.
To the best of our ability. Any questions?
Thank you for that update.
Thank you all.
Thank you. The next item is the consent agenda. Is there any questions? Did you see there? Have you had a chance to look in your packet? There's no questions. Would someone like to make a motion? Or do you have something?
No, I was just going to make a motion. Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as a...
We have a motion from Commissioner Dawson to approve the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second's been made by Commissioner Dottie Robinson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Come to the public forum. I don't know if there's anyone signed up or if there's anyone that wants to speak. Is there anyone here that would like to speak at the public forum? If not, we will forgo those rules. This will not be the same public forum as for the...
Public hearing.
To what?
No, I'm good, pardon.
For the Halt-Wagner Retreat. It's not the same. We'll open that up for comments. So it doesn't look like anyone's here for the public forum, so... Next item is the sale of the Halt-Wagner Retreat parcel. And I'm going to need a motion to recess the regular meeting and open the public hearing for the Halt-Wagner Retreat. Can I have a motion to recess the regular meeting?
I'm making a motion that we recess the public...
Having a motion by Commissioner Katie Robinson. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second's been made by Commissioner Mary Hassel. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So at this time, we will open up the floor to anyone that wants to speak to this property sale. If you would, when you come forward, just state your name and your address, please.
Chris Kegel. I would be Uwari National Forest and a recreation coordinator for the Uwari's. And I wanted to speak about the Halt-Wagner, just real briefly about the history, late '80s. It was built in a memorial to Beth Halt-Wagner, who passed away here in the forest by her family. The family worked with several land partners. The county, quite a bit of public and private money was put into the project. The project was turned over to the Western Conference of United Methodist Church. United Methodist Church went to Pfeiffer University to manage the property directly. So it was managed from the late '80s until around 2008 by Pfeiffer Outdoor Recreation Facility. Several commissioners in the past have used it for retreats. We've used it quite a bit with the county chamber of commerce under Judy Stevens, with adult leadership, youth leadership, many other uses over time. So it wasn't just used by the university. We have been able to use it direct with the county as a tourism asset. Different folks that have come into the area. We've done work with Forest Service to have educational programs out there. We've had hosted biologists, certainly weddings. Things so, under Pfeiffer, we were able to host quite a different events there. When a Halt-Wagner, in the late '80s, going into 2008, it was in need of some repair. So Pfeiffer decided they wanted to turn the management over to the county at that time. County not knowing how to manage it correctly at the time, were just looking at different ways to manage the property, worked with Uwari Cabin Rentals to make the property available, keep income coming in, and then work out a financial arrangement with Uwari Cabin Rentals so that we could keep that in tourism use. From my stance as a tourism coordinator here in the county, we've been able to utilize that quite a bit. Looking at selling the property, I don't know about the legality. There's going to be a, to look at the numbers and look at how the funding came together in the origination of the property, I'm sure it's going to get a little entangled, looking at private funds versus public funds and where the legalese of that stand. But as far as the management of the property, when it was under the county from 2008 until now and also under Pfeiffer, it was just a property that was open for all of us to utilize. And we can look at a real property assessment, the value of what that may be on a real estate market. But as a tourism asset for us, to be able to house 25 to 30 folks with a main lodge and secondary lodge, it's, we don't have another property like that in Montgomery County that we can use. So as a tourism asset, it's great that we can hold retreats here in our county versus sending them over to Alboral or in Ashboro. It is a 25-minute drive from Highway 109 into the forest, the way the conditions are now. Funds have been allocated. Richard Burr was here in December checking with the Forest Service and movement where we are with that project to fund the paving of that road. That road leading into the Halt-Wagner and Green Gap was funded through the Department of Insurance. That will pave the road within a quarter mile of the property. So access time to the property will probably be around 15 minutes. We should see, and Forest Service is doing assessments, ecology, hydrology assessments, on that road now. We should see some development later in the year. But I'm mainly speaking about the Halt-Wagner as a tourism asset for the county. If we give that over to a private residence, it's worth much more to us than the most likely, somewhere around $500,000, that the property that actually works now. It's going to need some repair. Don't know those numbers. My suggestion would be to work with our maintenance department, assess the property, look at some of those past numbers, past agreements. I can help provide some sources to some of the original agreements. But that's going to take a while to understand what that is. Asking you as the commissioners to look at the property as that tourism asset. Let's see how we can work with it versus just hand that over to a private residence. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Is there anyone else here that would like to speak to the...
I would.
Okay, come forward and state your name and your address, sir.
I'm Donnie Bickerstein, Gashore. I'm a personal friend of Dr. Halt-Moggler, and I've been with the retreat from the day we started it to the day we ended it. And it's my understanding that there is no private funds in it that we know of. The lawyer, our county lawyer, looked into it. There were two grants, $150,000 to each grant. And then there's been probably $100,000, $150,000 of personal money put into it. And if there's anything you want to know about it, I was with it from the day it began to the day it ended, and I ran it. When we turned it over to a couple of people here, it fell apart. And I don't, it's my understanding that there's no private money, and it can't be sold privately. And I speak personally with Dr. Halt-Moggler yesterday. We just hope the county will keep it or do something with it. The first time all this came up, National Geographic looked into it, and also I think the Methodist Association was into it. And it was, somehow it got out of hand. It's my understanding it can't be sold to private. I'd be willing to answer anything you want to know about the retreat.
Does anyone have any questions?
I don't think I have any questions, other than I've used that facility quite often. My husband, back in the day, used to do much leadership retreat and rent that facility. So I'm very familiar with all of that property. It is absolutely a wonderful facility. And the creation of that was fabulous, and the history of it, you know, speaks volumes.
There were times when we actually double booked. It was doing great till about 2, no, yeah. What year was that, you know?
2008.
2008. So it was really going strong. And of course, after that, someone tore down the rope course, and they just put a new rope course in. And... You know, a lot of hearts broken if it's sold, and Dr. Halt-Wagner, he, that's his life, and I can say he put a lot of money into it, and I did, not money, but labor. But we appreciate anything you come up with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Any questions from the board?
I do, Chris, can I ask you one question? So, Uory Cabin Rentals would have all the information since 2008?
Yes.
For what has been rental piece, okay, thank you.
We understand the, the financial.
Right, perfect. Thank you.
If no more questions, could I have a motion that we close the public hearing?
I make a motion we close the public hearing.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Hassel, do I have a second?
A second.
Second's been made by Commissioner Katie Robinson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so I need a motion for us to convene the regular scheduled meeting.
I will make a motion that we reconvene our regularly scheduled meeting.
So I guess now, I guess we can ask any questions. I think on this, that, I think, since everybody's kinda new to it, and I'm really new to it too, that maybe we table it and research it and, and find out what is the best course of action for this. Everybody like that idea? Could I have a motion then, that we're gonna table this and research and, and find out what is the best for the county and, and everyone else involved too? So could I have a motion that we table this?
Can I ask a question first?
Yes.
Do we know if our attorney has checked into the financial piece or anything?
I'm not sure.
I don't believe so, Ms. Robinson, I don't think the attorney has, I think what Matthew had suggested would be what direction the council, the commissioners want to go in, and then we proceed from there, so I don't believe that has been looked at.
Okay.
But we, we could certainly, if that's, if the commissioners want that research, we could certainly do that.
Yeah, I think that'd be part of the research, to see what our best course of action is.
I do believe we, yeah, we need to understand what is rental volume being, what's the cost of maintenance, I know it's, it's pricey to upkeep that property, and then really what legal possibility there is. I know that we have some information in here from the statute, but really from a legal standpoint, so we know how to proceed.
That answer you now. So would someone like to make a motion then, we table it till we research it a little further?
I make the motion that we table the Halt-Wagner Retreat until we get more information and have our attorney do some research.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Dottie Robinson, do I have a second?
A second.
Second's been made by Commissioner Hassel, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So we'll table that and, and get the manager to look into it and, and just research it a little more and, and find out what, let's say, our best course of action.
And Mr. Chairman, if, if, if the board thinks of other questions, other things they wanna know, just let me know, and we'll include that in the research.
Okay, thank you. Next item is the county manager's report, and it's the contract with Mr. Allen as interim manager, we'd like to extend it to February the 28th, 21. Anybody have any questions?
I'll make a motion that we move forward with that contract extension.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Dawson, do I have a second?
A second.
I'll second.
Second's been made by Commissioner Katie Robinson, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So the contract has been extended for you, Mr. Allen, and we're so glad to have you on board with helping us.
Thank you.
The next item is the contract with the Piedmont Triad Regional Council for Planning Services, their contract, they're wanting to extend it or will extend it through June 30th or 21. Does anybody have any questions on that? Hearing nine, do I have a motion that we extend it until June 30th?
I make a motion that we extend the contract with Piedmont Triad Regional Council through June 30th, 21.
Motion's, motion's been made by Commissioner Dottie Robinson, do I have a second?
A second.
Second's been made by Commissioner Hassel, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So that has been extended through June 30th. So the next item is the Board of Commissioner appointments, and let's see if we can get this right. The first one is the Piedmont Triad Regional Council delegate, currently, I think Commissioner Robinson, Dottie Robinson is serving there, would you continue to do that?
I will, unless somebody else wants to take it.
I would like to nominate Dottie Robinson to continue in that, in that role.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Dawson that Dottie Robinson continue to do that role, do I have a second?
Okay.
Second's been made by Commissioner Katie Robinson, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next one is the Piedmont Triad Regional Development Council, Board of Directors member, and I think Ms. Dawson has said she would like to do that if I get a motion that nominate her or let her be appointed to that committee?
I make a motion to nominate Commissioner Dawson to the Piedmont Triad Regional Development Council.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Hassel, do I have a second?
A second.
Second's been made by Commissioner Katie Robinson, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The next one is the Piedmont Triad Rural Planning Organizational Transportation Advisory Committee, and I guess the, is, is this the members and the member in alternate, Commissioner Rob, Dottie Robinson is on this, and we don't have a, a alternate. Dottie, would you still like to serve on that?
I would.
Do I have a motion, or is there anybody else that would like to, to serve as an alternate?
Well, first, I would like to make the motion that we nominate Commissioner Dottie Robinson for the Piedmont Triad Rural Planning Organization Transportation Advisory Committee in her existing role.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Dawson that we leave Commissioner Dottie Robinson in that position, do I have a second?
A second.
Motion's, I mean, seconded by Commissioner Hassel, all in favor? The next one is the North Carolina Southeast Partnership Board of Directors member.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, there is the alternate position to the TAC if you'd like to appoint him.
Yeah, they, they all spoke up at one time, so I figured they really wanted to be in. We'll back up. So would someone like to serve as the alternate? Commissioner Hassel has said she would serve as the alternate for that board, do I have a motion that we?
I make a motion to nominate Commissioner Hassel.
Motion's been made to, for Commissioner Hassel to serve as the alternate, do I have a second?
I second that.
Second's been made by Commissioner Dawson, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So now we can get to the other one.
Yes, thank you.
So the North Carolina Southeast Partnership Board of Directors member, Commissioner Katie Robinson said she would serve on that board, do I have a motion that we accept?
I make a motion to nominate Katie Robinson for the North Carolina Southeast Partnership Board of Directors.
Have a motion to accept Katie, is, do I have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Commissioner Dottie Robinson, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? The next one is the Airport Committee member, and we had a possibility of Ms. Hassel, Commissioner Hassel, serving on there, do you want to look into that, or do you want to accept that?
I'll accept that.
So we have a motion, or I need a motion to accept Ms. Hassel as the Airport Committee member?
I will make the motion to nominate Commissioner Hassel for the Airport Committee member.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Dawson to accept Ms. Hassel, do I have a second?
A second then.
Seconded by Commissioner Dottie Robinson, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The next one is the appointments to the Planning Board, each commissioner gets to appoint one member to the Planning Board, and I think Commissioner Dawson is the only one that has gotten someone to fill that position as of now, so I guess do we just take each one of them individually?
Yes, sir.
So Commissioner Dawson, would you like to make a motion that?
I would like to make a motion that currently on the board is Roland Connolly, and I would like to motion that we keep Roland Connolly on that board, the Planning Board.
So the motion's been made by Commissioner Dawson to leave Roland Connolly in that position, could I get a second?
A second.
Seconded by Commissioner Katie Robinson.
No.
Or was it Dottie?
It was Dottie.
Motion's been made, or seconded by Commissioner Dottie Robinson, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So on the other two, we just table those two?
If, if the board members are not ready to, to move ahead, we can put that on the February agenda, Mr. Chairman.
So we will, we will table the other two and put them on next month's agenda.
Okay.
And all of the current planning board members will continue to serve until their successor is appointed, so, Mr. Combs, so everyone will continue on until February.
Okay, thank you. Other appointments is, we have to appoint the clerk, Misty Coffin is our clerk, would someone like to make a motion that we continue to use Misty?
I make a motion that we continue to use Misty.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Katie Robinson, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Dawson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The what? Any opposed? Thank you, Misty. And the other is the appointment of the county attorney, Russell J. Hollers III. Someone like to make a motion that we continue with Mr. Hollers?
I'll make a motion that we continue with Russell J. Hollers III as our county attorney.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Dawson that we retain Mr. Hollers, do I have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hassel, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item is the county reports. Mr. Manager, do you have anything on those, or does anyone have any questions?
If I could, I'd like to, I'd like to supplement Director Perez Baldwin's comments earlier, she did a good job in summarizing what's been going on, but I wanted to make sure that the Board of Commissioners knows that this has been a real challenge, and if you watch the news, you'll see it's not just a challenge in Montgomery County, but it's been a challenge across the country because the guidance has changed, you know, there are lots more people now who are eligible for the vaccine, the doses don't appear to have been increased, so we're, we are concerned about dosage supply, and if we're gonna continue to get the amount, I, I don't think we're gonna get enough to keep up with demand, as Director Baldwin says, we're gonna do the, the best we can, but I wanted to mention a couple things to you. There are approximately 2 million North Carolinians who are age 65 and over, so that's 2 million people that, you know, have to be vaccinated, and, and right now, the supply is anywhere near that, and not all those people will elect to be vaccinated, but hopefully most of them will. So it's a big challenge, and, and, and the timeframe to get those people vaccinated is gonna be a, a, a long time, and I say that just asking people to be patient, we can't, you know, the state can't vaccinate 2 million people at one time, so it's, it's gonna be a process, and it's gonna be, take some time. Our internal processes in terms of answering the phone and some of those things, we have not done as good a job as I would like for us to have done, we're working on that, and I want to particularly mention that Commissioner Hassel and Commissioner Dottie Robinson came in on Friday and helped us with answering some of those phone calls, and we appreciate that. In addition, Ms. Baldwin has been doing a good job, but some key employees, Misty is one, Renee Jones, our HR director, another, Brian Helms, our IT director, and Rodney Smith, our E and S director, they've all been trying to work with me and with Ms. Baldwin to, to get additional resources to make things better, and a number of county departments, including some elected departments, have, have been providing people from their staff to assist in answering phones or with the clinic out at the center, the Garner Center today. So I want, if I could, Mr. Chairman, just want to recognize the Racer Dees, Melissa Pipkin, staff from Sheriff Watkins' office has been involved, and employees from Environmental Health, Utilities Billing and Collection, Soil and Water, Elections, and Social Services have all sort of pitched in, and, you know, this is the, the most important thing the county's doing right now, I think, and so they're, they're all helping. It, it's still, the volume of calls coming in is, is kind of overwhelming, but we'll, we'll continue to do the best we can, we just ask that people be, be patient on that.
Thank you.
In terms of the other reports in the, in the book, I don't have any other comments, but we'll try to answer any questions if there are, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, and all the staff that has chipped in, I know it has been a, a big, a big undertaking, and hopefully we'll get better at all, with all of it. Does anybody else have any questions concerning any of those items? No questions? Well, I need a motion to close or recess the regular scheduled meeting to go into closed session for personnel, someone like to make that motion?
I make the motion that we go in, go into closed session in regards to personnel matter.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Dottie Robinson, do I have a second?
A second.
Been seconded by Commissioner Hassel, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? So we will adjourn for the closed session on personnel, and we shall return. So we will adjournment for the closed session on personnel, and we shall return.